Now in session, we have the opening prayer by Pastor Norah Tillman Young of the Joyful Heart Church of Stockdale.
Morning, if you can bow your head and close your eyes. Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for bringing us here. Lord, right now, we come together asking prayers for our county officials. We thank you so much for their service to our community. I pray that you would give them wisdom in their decisions and that we would have good discussion. I pray that you would be with them, that you would hold their hands. I pray that you would keep them and their families safe and help. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather freely. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, moving right along to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comments. No public comments, and then Agenda Item Number Four, Certificate of Completion and Awards. Okay, certificate of completion. Oh, yeah. Okay, precinct three, Commissioner Ernest Giff Hyatt is absent.
I slid in under the water.
Yes, barely.
Boy, this room doesn't sound like music.
It's a good thing we don't send you home for being late.
Hey, I was driving, time.
Okay, back to Agenda Item Number Four, Certificate of Completion and Awards. Certificate of Completion, Jan Hardle, Christina Moose, Megan Posey, Gloria Bailey, and H.R. Grimm have successfully completed tech cybersecurity awareness training certified state mandated course provided by Texas Association of Counties. Texas Veteran Commission Certificate of Accreditation is presented to H.R. Grimm for successfully completing the annual testing requirement on February 3rd, 2020. Okay, here's the one we're all here for. Agenda Item Number Five, Richard L. Jackson County Judge discussing take action on conducting a petition for local option election to legalize the sale of alcoholic beverages, including mixed beverages, A, in a beer-only area, and B, the dry-only area. These are areas in eastern part of Wilson County. And we got Mr. Herbert.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor and Commissioners. We are seeking to be put on ballot in November to give the citizens of Stockdale opportunity to buy alcohol beverages other than beer. We have for the court a couple of affidavits, as well as a couple different signature sheets, a copy of our notification in the newspaper, and I believe that completes what we need to provide to you at this time. And I think all we would ask you guys is for a motion to approve putting us on the ballot.
Approve putting on the ballot or putting, letting you go out for the petition and show the ballot.
Okay.
And that's what it's for. This is for the two, and these precincts go back to the prohibition area. One area in the Pandora area is completely dry, and the Stockdale area is beer-only, and this is to make Wilson County, countywide, mixed drinks. So...
So that would complete the entire county?
What's that?
That would complete the entire county?
That would complete the entire county. Evidently, back when it first came to a vote, this side of the county voted to go completely wet, and that side of the county stayed dry until nineteen, late 1960s, when they had a petition to go beer-only in the Stockdale area. This will make the whole county the same, and it will be a lot easier when it comes time to issuing alcoholic beverage licenses through the TABC, because they don't really have a clue what part of our county is what. I'll entertain a motion to, for A and B, both.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gomez.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wiley, that we, that vote to go out for a petition to have a vote to legalize liquor or mixed beverages in the eastern area. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
We've got 60 days now.
Thank you.
And I've got a text from Tom Caldwell, and he said he would be in shortly. Catherine, if you would look over there to be sure that the petition that they're going to pass out will suffice when Tom gets here or whatever.
Commissioner Wiley cannot have more moutch on?
He cannot. And legalize it.
There's been improvement on that side of the county.
Yeah, it's kind of dry.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item, which is, 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 which[476.13]
We can hear it now.
Yes. Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven, Aragamas Commissioner Precinct One, Presentation by Gori Grachin. Is that right? About possibly amending Texas Lottery laws found in the government code to allow for certain proceeds to be paid to counties and cities. Discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution to support such amendments.
Good morning, you are on. I'm Mr. Nurse, Sheriff, and those here present. My name is Gori Esaydreck. I've been living in the county for thirty-something years and four in the city. There's a presentation that you familiar with it, that you probably saw in the newspaper. And I think you probably have the document with you. So I'm gonna make it as brief as possible because you got a long agenda. And it's based in regards to the lottery, where the prizes of the prize money that is awarded to the players. The players actually own the lottery. If there's no player, will be no lottery. And in the last fiscal year between eighteen and nineteen, they increased twenty-three percent, so they increased by one billion dollars or so. In the past, the lottery was fifty percent for the players. That is over sixty-five percent. It was a voluntary tax of thirty percent. Now it's only twenty-five that go to the school. And then if the prize money has increased to sixty-five percent. However, on the last page, were we asking, and I'm proposing, and move forward eventually, hopefully, we will approve and be able to get it into the legislature and passing. So the law can be amended where four point eight percent be given to the county. Right now, the way the law is, the counties and the city don't get anything from the lottery. Anything they sell, anything this we tell, there's a tax into it, equal cent for the lottery. That money gets siphoned out of the area, and I guess it had been overlooked that when that money moves out of the area, it never come back. So it's only fair that the players, that they play, that they get some money back into the community by a form of a five or four point eight percent of the prize money that the county can use. It's estimated that the four billion of the prize money, four point eight, that would generate about three quarters of a million dollars for each county in the state of Texas, which there are two hundred and fifty-four counties. Within two years at the rate that is growing, this could reach a million dollars. So my proposal is, and asking is that if you approve this resolution, then I'll be able to move forward to eventually carry it into hopefully, get it to the legislation where it becomes law and changed it. So the county will be able to use that money for purpose locally and just one thing. So thank you for the opportunity and your happy questions. You're on, Mr. Nurse.
Okay, I have a question. And I know you got support with Senator Zaffarini.
Correct.
How about any of the other legislators, anybody else with the state, are they, what is their opinion of this?
I haven't got that far yet because Ms. Zaffarini had requested, and she asked me when I have the conversation with her, that I should go to the city and the county first. And then from there, once I give the county that it is approved resolution, then I'll be able to go to few cities in the county, and then we move forward with municipal leads and county leads on it. She counting on numbers. Her staff, nothing contacted me last week, and she was very happy that everybody's going forward and that they like the idea. And the staff is ready to start preparing the documentation once we get everybody on board to make a present and just legislation into the state.
Well, I don't think we got nothing to lose on that, that's a resolution.
I would agree with you on that. We don't have anything to lose. I don't see this happening. I don't see the state, when they're losing revenue giving money away. The other problem is, as you have it drawn up with two hundred and fifty-four counties, everybody gets an equal share.
Right.
I can almost guarantee you if that happens, it's gonna be weighted based upon population. You know, Harris County, Dallas, those areas.
Barrett County.
Barrett County. They're gonna want a bigger, a bigger part of it. But there's no harm in trying.
And I believe our schools, our schools in Wilson County are getting a percentage of that.
What they get out of the education, but I come for a different part of it. That's already dedicated, and what we're taking is from the prize money.
Oh.
For the prize money.
From the sixty-five percent.
Forty-six, only sixty-five percent. So it won't affect them anyway. The reason I kind of decided I will be equal to all the county, because some counties are richer than others. And therefore, the poorer county get less. So kind of make it all equal across the board. So those county that will sit, that don't have none revenue, now be able to make improvement on what they have, a better than self.
Do you know of any other counties or cities that are moving forward with supporting this in the state?
Well, they have seen some in the newspaper, and they have sent in emails and stuff like that, that they kind of like the idea.
Right.
Because the idea is based on not be able to raise taxes on the taxpayer.
Right.
And they, they see the need now with all the difficulty that the counties don't with. So only by trying and moving forward, we find out, well, this is the second step I have to take before I can go forward. I have the time and the resources to go across whether or if I go approval, and that is right here.
Right, but other counties and cities are adopting and approving their resolutions?
Well, I haven't yet to that, yeah. But however, the municipal lead, Texas municipal lead, they already are in favor and they're saying, we will, when you get this done, we can go forward on this. So they're saying this is the second step.
I think the idea of it.
Two hundred and fifty-three more counties to go.
Yeah, I think the idea of it's great, but the idea of Wilson County getting the sales tax was great too, and it passed, it failed miserably. Yeah. We're, and when you're gonna go up there and try to, you know, this is just me, I'd love to, I'd love to have it, I'd love it to happen. I'm not confident or I have no confidence at all that it will happen. Because we're, the state legislature and our state government is limiting us to what we can do with our own ad valorem taxes. So why are they gonna take some of their money and give to us when they're trying to tell us we can't even, we don't even know what to do with our own money?
Well, to start out with, when the lottery started, all this was supposed to go to school education?
Yeah, I talked to the state about it, that's why I presented, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they, they keep changing and changing, and maybe we oughta just see what happens on the kinds of resolution and get a start on it and.
It doesn't hurt, but I'm holding my breath. It doesn't hurt, I'm holding my breath, and here's another thing, if this happens, okay, they're already having trouble communicating with the state government. And this, they're gonna say, all these counties who want more money, it's just gonna upset them and say, well, gosh, you know, maybe we'll get them back. But if y'all wanna go forward with it, if there's, it's not, hopefully it won't hurt anything.
Sir, I have one question. Did you bring a resolution?
The resolution was passed by the city.
No, no, but did you bring us a resolution?
Example.
Did you bring a resolution for commissioners to sign?
Okay.
You have to vote on making a resolution before.
Well, let's, now we need the resolution when we can read it in the record. Let's table this until the next commissioner's court meeting and bring a resolution then. Bring us a resolution that we can.
All right, I will pass it.
I'll go, I'll go to town, I'll go to town.
Thank you. So this is, you just table it until the next commissioner's court meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners on?
Yes, sir.
On the agenda for the next one?
Okay.
Okay. So moving right along to Agenda Item Number Eight, Hall File Commissioner Precinct Two, discuss and take action on new hotel occupancy tax to enhance expo center with a new fence around the AC units at forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And we have been informed, uh.
Four thousand.
Four thousand, forty-two hundred dollars. Uh, we can't use that for that. Can't be used, so we just don't take it out of the. So, and we've got that, so we don't have, that didn't matter before commissioner's court meeting.
Can it be used for anything related to that?
It can only be used, the way the code, local government code reads is that it can only be used for promoting tourism. Promoting tourism and the convention and hotel industry is permitted by the applicable provisions of this subchapter. So the fence itself around the AC would be more considered in line with building repairs than it would be used in hotels, in my opinion.
Would it, and it's not on the agenda, but would it work if we wanted to put a new sign out front that promoted?
It would be, yes, that would be different.
Okay. Okay, so this, no action on Agenda Item Number Eight. Moving along to Agenda Item Number Nine, Wichita County Judge, Michelle Moore, Grant's Manager, discuss and take action to include and support to accept the ACOG coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. Here is the resolution. Michelle, you wanna read it?
Commissioner Judge, is, this is, you already approved to accept this a grant back in on May eleventh, and this is just a resolution for formality saying for the application process. Resolution, the county of Wilson authorizing the filing for the grant application with the Alamo Area Council of Governments, ACOG, with coronavirus emergency supplemental funding, CDSF, authorizing Richard L. Jackson County Judge to act on behalf of the county of Wilson in all matters related to the application, and pledging that if the grant is received, the county of Wilson will comply with the grant requirements of ACOG Federal Emergency Appropriations for Coronavirus Health Response and the Agency Operations Act in the state of Texas. Whereas the Alamo Area Council of Governments, ACOG, is directed by the Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office to administer the CDSF program authorized by the Federal Emergency Appropriations for Coronavirus Health Response and Agency Operations Act. Whereas the county of Wilson in the state of Texas is qualified to apply for grant funds under the request for applications, now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Wilson County, Texas at its regular meeting in Forestville, Texas on May eleventh, twenty twenty, hereby unanimously agreed to apply for grant funds from the CDSF program authorized by the Federal Emergency Appropriations for Coronavirus Health Response and Agency Operations Act. And further that Richard L. Jackson County Judge was authorized to request grant funding under the ACOG's request for applications of the CDSF program. And act on behalf of the county of Wilson in all matters related to the grant application and any subsequent grant contract and grant project that may result. And further that if the project is funded, the county of Wilson will comply with the grant requirements of the ACOG, the Office of the Governor and Public Safety Office of the state of Texas, and further that the grant funds and any grant funding equipment or facilities will be used only for the purposes for which they intend to go with the grant. And further that activities will comply with and support the federal requirements and rules for funding in which the activities are performed. In witness thereof, the Commissioners of Wilson County, Forestville, Texas, pass through this resolution and therefore set our hands on this on the second day of June twenty-two.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Gomez.
I'll serve.
Second by Commissioner, thank you. Second by Commissioner Wylie, that we accept the, approve the resolution to support and accept the grant. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Agenda Item Number Ten, Wichita County Judge, Michelle Moore, Grant's Manager, discuss and approve this commission to TCEQ for requests for new registration for the Wilson County Citizens Collection Facility for the ACOG, TCEG, TCEQ. Solid Waste Grant submitted December twenty nineteen. Michelle, go ahead.
Judge, Commissioner, so this was a grant application that we submitted back in December of last year. We're still kind of going through it. We've had some phone interviews. ACOG supports us fully. We provided updated project description, and there was some concern whether or not we needed to apply for a new registration or permit since we were expanding the waste collection facility. We have done, with the county judges help, have done the due diligence, and it was determined that we did not need to file a notice of intent at this point, or file for a new application or new permit or new registration. So ACOG has forwarded that information from TCEQ to TCEQ to do their own due diligence and review. So basically, at this point, we're kind of in a, in a holding pattern, and we don't necessarily need to file for a new registration. So I just wanted to provide you our update, we thought we did. That's why this, this item was on the agenda, but at this point, that we got word on late Thursday, early Friday.
So we got a permit already?
Right, right, that was the original permit. But they were, they had some concern, given that we were expanding it so much, that, you know, are there gonna be new roll-offs or new, new capabilities? And I said, not, not at this point, maybe at a future date, two or three, we'll apply for additional permits at that point, but we're just expanding it, so.
So, I got a question on the permit. Okay, that permit, was it back during the old days of the landfill, or back in the new days of the collection facility?
Yeah, this is the new days at that point.
It was actually a letter from the judge, and they approved that letter. Not really a permit.
It was a notice of intent, it was a registration.
Okay.
It's not really classified as a, as a base.
It's not a facility to collection station.
I'm sure I'm correct, but I'm assuming that this was when we talked about having two entries and having the ability to have our annual, our semi-annual collection events, have all of that out there. That would be great.
Or down to the wire, so hopefully we'll have an answer soon.
Okay, so this is no action necessary.
Correct.
Okay, I wish I could comment, Michelle, on how she keeps up with all the grants that we're working on. She doing a lot on all that.
That's good.
Everything else that she ended up.
I would applaud her, awesome.
Okay, moving right along to Agenda Item Number Eleven, Wichita County Judge, John Holcomb, IT Director, discuss and take action on the use of the JP Technology Fund to purchase a workstation and software for JP Core Rutland and a workstation and software for JP Two Kennedy. John?
Well, I'm just requesting your permission to purchase a computer and software workstation for JP One, I'm sorry, for JP Four and for JP Two. The JP Four computer and software total is two thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. And the JP Two computer and software total is two thousand seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents.
So the workstation, what, with the computer one?
It's, it's the computer and the software altogether.
That's the workstation?
Basically, my workstation. So JP.
I thought it was an exercise.
Yeah, oh, okay.
And there is plenty of money in the tech fund, correct?
I, I checked with the treasury and, and the honor's office. I don't think, you know, obviously, this hasn't been budgeted for the current honor's office, but I understand there is money.
There is money in their fine balance in the bank. There's just not money that was budgeted for, did not have all that.
Is this a computer upgrade, is everything?
Right, do they got enough computers or?
They have a computer, but it's not capable of running operating system they need to run on. They have Windows seven, these, these are two computers that still actually have Windows seven that needs Windows ten installed on.
But in the tech fund, the JP tech fund, there is.
Nineteen thousand.
Oh, okay, they've got plenty of money to do that.
Do they all have their degree?
They already have.
Oh, yeah.
That's something that happened back when I was still with JP. We made a, a deal with all four JP's head degree, or the majority of the JP's head degrees spend this money, they all have.
I checked with, well, I checked with JP Two through Four. I did contact JP One, but I haven't heard back from JP One, so I'm not sure if they approved or not, but the other three have.
They have computers back there?
We even had a telephone.
What?
I'll make a motion. Motion by Commissioner Foss, second by Commissioner Wylie, that we approve to use the tech fund to buy the computers and, or workstations and software. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So this one passes. So, moving right along, it's like Leanne's got a lot on here. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Leanne Hosey, EMC twelve A, Waterline, thirty-eight hundred, County Road three oh two, Precinct Two, Bensie, bore the road to fix a water man.
Not fix the water man, what they need is to put water across the road for the county.
Okay.
They got a meter across the road, and instead of having a pan that costs extra, they're gonna look up the meter.
They're gonna bore?
Yes.
They're gonna run, they're gonna run on their own, what is it, Sunco?
Yeah, they got a meter on one side of the road, and then run a line across the road with the water.
Is Sunco good with it?
Well, it's, it's a private.
It's a private, private land. It's gonna be a private water, it won't be the Sunco. So they've got a well also, so they're gonna get water from the meter. That coming from either Sunco or.
Yeah.
Or Charlie Spring.
But it's not off of Sunco's land, it's off of there, it's just a water line.
Private line coming off of the meter. Okay, I know it's on the downhill side, it's on the, but are they good with it? Do they know what's gonna, there's gonna be a bore and there's.
Other location.
Okay, good deal.
I'll make a motion and approve it.
That's motion by Commissioner Foss.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gomez, we approve the, the road bore. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Thirteen, Jan Harrow, County Treasurer, Financial Report.
Good morning. I emailed all of y'all my letter report because I was supposed to be on vacation, but you threw an emergency. Oh, we did not get to go on vacation, so y'all have the.
I have mine on.
I reviewed it on my.
I'll send you a copy of.
I thought I did, but I didn't bring it with me.
You didn't bring it with you?
No.
Okay, I have a page to sign, I brought one.
So we can sign that one?
Yes.
Okay. Thought it's unusual, I was hit it by email.
It was, I wasn't supposed to be here this week, but it said, you have family, emergency and we weren't able to go.
I hope everything's okay.
Hopefully it will be.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gomez.
I'll serve.
Second by Commissioner Wylie, we approve the financial report of County Treasurer. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Agenda Item Fourteen, Jalen T. Bonner, Human Resource General Specialist, payroll and personnel changes.
Keith P. Ian resigned from his position as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department effective June fourth, and Angela, Angelica and Ricardo Carballo both resigned from their positions as dispatchers for the Sheriff's Department effective June sixteenth.
Are those in white?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that doesn't require any changes and, uh, line up or anything like that, so it's essentially commercial, thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Winnetou, Virginia County Auditor, Financial Report and bills.
Our bill totaled one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars and forty-one cents. There is nothing really out of the ordinary money.
Precinct Three's not here today, obviously. I have a question, just in that there are two, two charges for Precinct Three for Cooper Equipment, and typically those are related to equipment that we share for the county, so that might bear taking a look at the very top. Cooper Equipment, they have two entries. And it may be something he has, but we have a chip spreader and an emulsion truck that we got from Cooper Equipment, and for the most part, that's all we have, so that may be a four-way split.
It's a four-way split. They're part of, they're part of, it's a personal for the chips.
Big unit fit. I just wonder, I was looking at these, and we've got, you know, thousands of, tens of thousands for one, two, and three, and seventy-six hundred, well, what are the fours doing anything?
Oh, just wait till the next one.
Smoke too soon. Okay, I'll, I'll review that, and if that's the case, I'll go ahead and have a split as well.
So you'll take it, spread it out, or we won't change the bottom line at all?
No.
No.
Be the eight, nineteen number of splits always.
I'll make a motion to.
Motion by Commissioner Gomez, second by Commissioner Foss, we accept the financial report from the County Auditor. Is there any more questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so we've got, I'm ready for the court. Are they courting, courting it here, or are they courting it? No, they've always done, it's more like, I'm for some of the different things like that, they've been doing the zoom. Oh, that's the last one? Yes, that's what they've been, they're not changing, but starting next month, there will be other charges, because we've got the first and the second, we've got arrangements. Will we have to split them up? Because you only have twenty of your twenty-five people solving feet in here. So we're gonna do some, uh, the morning of the first, some in the afternoon of the first, some in the morning of the second, some in the afternoon, if you keep it rolling. Okay, that was fun, wasn't it? Agenda Item Number Sixteen, nine forty.